Let's get started. I am Stuart McIntosh and will be chairing tonight's meeting. I'm joined with a fellow board member colleagues. I have Janie Regan, John Brown, and Charlie Law. And also we have our superintendent, Paul Taft, in the front row, and Christina Batista, who is the secretary to both the zoning and planning boards of the Village of Bronxville. So as a reminder, the approval of variances requires a majority vote. Tonight, we have four voting members. Therefore, approval will require three votes in support of the requested variance. Tonight, we have two applications. And I think tonight, we're going to start with 309 Pondfield. We're going to kick off with that one first. Who will be presenting? Okay. And if you could just be sure to speak into the mic and introduce yourself. Thank you.
Evening.
Evening.
Hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
My name's Eric Smith. I'm an architect, doing the design work on 309 Pondfield. I'm joined this evening by Will Ryder, who's the owner. If there are any questions for Will, he's happy to also answer those. I see Paul over here scrolling through things. We're here this evening to request a variance with respect to an existing non-conforming garage that has a dwelling unit above for the addition of a balcony, which is shown in the plans. I don't know if you want me to go through all of the zoning information ahead of time, but maybe Paul wants to just keep going through that.
Okay.
The zoning review, which has come up by virtue of it being in a side yard setback, has brought us here this evening. These are the set of drawings for the project. It's the main house and the garage with the unit above. They were built in about, we figure between 1912 and 1915. We're going through a major renovation of the house. It hadn't really been touched in about 50 years inside, so we're bringing all the systems up to current standards and also from the utility of a young family. The garage and unit above, you can see at the top of the page there, was built obviously before the zoning setbacks were in force, and the entire structure sits within that side yard. It's on a corner lot here, so we've got access from both Pondfield at the bottom of the page and Argyle on the left-hand side of the page. These are the drawings of the existing building. Floor plans on the left with the garage plan at the lower part, the upstairs with a bedroom, sitting room, kitchen, bathroom, and the four existing elevations. The main one that we'll be focusing on is the lower right-hand elevation. That's the west elevation, where there currently are two windows and garage door. In our proposal for the house, you can see on the left again, the garage floor and the lower level upstairs, removing the demising wall between the two rooms to turn it into more of a study/studio. And the balcony that we're here tonight to talk about is on the very left-hand side of that upper plan, which would project out about four, four and a half feet by about nine and a half feet long. And on the elevation, you can see at the lower right, we've removed the two existing windows that are there, replaced them with two French doors and a large window in between. The balcony would be cantilevered, and we're replacing the garage doors below with the pair of doors instead of the single door that's there now. These are some of the structural information that would go into making that all happen. And if you want to keep going, Paul, I think... That's all the lot coverage, all of which we met. We have a permit for the main house at this point, obviously. And we've distributed letters. And I'll just show you these two pictures. This is the existing elevation, photograph of the existing elevation when Will and his wife bought the house, showing this west, the features of the west elevation. And then we've taken a little Photoshop to show you what it would look like. We built a model of it and have superimposed the model onto that photograph to show how the unit would look. The neighbors to our left, which you can't quite see, but if we went back to the plan, have their garage just on the other side of that hedge. I guess you can see a little bit in that left-hand picture there. You can see the roof of it. These are other pictures of the other elevations of the house, of the building, which we're not adjusting. And then Will wrote a letter to the board with his thoughts on the request for this variance.
I assume that the French doors mean that it's going to be accessible. It's not just decorative, right?
Yeah, it's meant to be able to step out onto.
Okay.
Yeah, in plan, you could see the two flanking doors would open out. The center one would stay fixed.
Is this going to be a guest house, or is it going to be, is somebody going to live there? Is it going to be for parents, for older, you know?
I think all of the above.
Okay.
I think they're trying to find their way through living from an apartment in the city to what a house means.
Right.
Or an office, right? Didn't you mention an office?
Yeah.
I think in the letter you said.
Yeah, I think in today's world with the kind of high-bread office structures that people are working from home as well as going into the city. Will's an attorney, and I think he sees himself working partly here and partly in the city. So it'll be a place to get away from the main house, where they're one son so far, and we'll see what happens after that.
Okay.
Your son's too young to notice you're taking out the basketball hoop.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say the same thing. What's going to happen when he's...
We talked a lot about that, actually.
Can't go back.
Yeah. There's the plan. You can see the two doors that we were just talking about.
Good. Bronxville now is a two-bedroom.
Those are all the documents, I think, that we brought that are on the PDF. So were there any questions?
Good.
I don't have really a question about that. I think it's a nice rendition of what you're planning to do. You're taking out the circular driveway, is that right?
Yeah, the plan was to, if we wanted to just do that, as part of the main house permit, we were taking out, so that being on the corner, and Pondfield's actually quite busy.
Right.
Having that circular driveway in the front, we're going to take that out and turn it back into lawn and gardens.
Yeah.
And so just have access in from Argyle.
That's great. That's a wonderful change, actually.
Nice trade-off.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I think it's a great trade-off, and it was kind of one of those aha moments in the design process where we said, well, what else can we do with this? And they all raised their hands, and I didn't put mine down, so we just did it.
Great.
That might be the first time we've seen a circular driveway taken out of a Bronxville lot.
Yeah.
That's a positive.
It is a positive.
That's a big positive.
We're very excited about it, because you can see they get a yard back and they take the busyness of the street away.
Great.
Right.
This may be a question for Christina or Paul. Was there anything from any neighbors? I know the mailings were all went out, but I didn't see anything.
I have a question that I think that they are going to... It's not a requirement?
Oh, no, I know that.
So I told everybody that you kind of suggested.
Right.
So I'm not sure if you agree.
Well, yeah, I did speak to my neighbor to the north, who will have, I think, the most direct view and access of the balcony and the door balcony. We actually chatted a little bit today about the project. He knows, his name's Michael, who's on Argyle.
Oh, on Argyle, yeah.
Yeah. And he just said, you know, sort of, I would have to see if I had a nice improvement.
Right.
It does, yeah.
Okay. Good, good, good. Okay. Is there anyone here in the public, any questions or comments for this applicant? Do we have any other questions, questions, comments?
No.
Okay, so let me propose a resolution that the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Bronxville grant to the residents of 309 Pondfield, a variance from section 310-25, increase in nonconformity of side yard setback with a balcony extension of the second floor of the garage, which is an increase in a pre-existing nonconformity of the side yard setback, four feet, two inches. John, your thoughts?
I'm in favor of the variance. I think it's a nice addition.
Thank you.
All right. Janie?
I agree. I think it's, it looks great. It's not substantial at all, really, and the nonconformity already exists, so I don't see it being a problem, and it's very attractive, so I'm also in favor of the variance.
Charlie?
I concur with my two colleagues. I believe it will actually improve the look of the garage guesthouse. It's not substantial, in my view, and so I'm in favor of it, yes.
Great. And I agree with my colleagues here, so congratulations, the variance is granted.
Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so let's turn to the second application, 19 Course View Drive.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. My name is Tom Dordavich. I'm an architect in the village and a resident of the village. The project at 19 Course View, it's unique in that it's deemed a corner lot, yet both sides are on course view because of the cul-de-sac. So the issue that we have here is that that little dog light that comes up there is where they actually have to park, because the distance in front of the garage to the curb is very, very shallow. So they drive up Course View and turn left right into the driveway, and the vehicles face towards the backyard. When they're backing out, they back out onto Course View in the wrong direction, so it's a bit of a hazard. And if you go to some of the photos, there's actually a blind curve right around there, too. So it's very difficult for cars coming from Ridgcroft this way for them to see them backing out of the driveway. So what they want to do is just increase that apron on that side 10 feet, so that way they can pull straight in. And when they back out, they would be backing out into the correct lane on Course View and driving forward. The result would be their headlights would no longer be shining towards their neighbor's residence. It would be perpendicular to their house now. And also, it would give them better, it would improve the sightlines from vehicles coming up and down Course View as well as theirs. The property, in terms of the FAR, they're below FAR, they're conforming. They're slightly over on coverage. The existing condition is slightly over on coverage, so increasing the driveway doesn't increase their coverage, based on the calculations. It decreases their open space. Required open space is 55 percent. They're currently at 67 percent, and the addition of the 200 square feet on the driveway would decrease the open space by 1 percent. So they would go from 67 to 66. So it's really minor, a minor impact on open space, and no impact on building coverage, since driveways are not calculated as coverage. So the reason why we're here is because it's already a nonconforming condition based on, based on their overage of coverage currently. Also proposed is, and I'll let, I'm joined tonight by the owner, Ben Goman, and also the landscape architect, Rhina. I'll let Ben take the mic now and explain a little bit more about the hardships that this created and the positives that the result will have.
Thanks, Tom. Hi, I'm Ben Goman. I'm the owner, as Tom mentioned. As Tom said, the way to pull into the driveway, it sort of requires us to back around and make almost a U-turn to get out onto the street. And the way that those trees are there on that corner and the shrubbery, it creates a complete blind spot. And there's a fair amount of foot traffic that comes up Course View from the dog park and from Ridgcroft, and it's really the pedestrian traffic that I think is the, you know, our biggest concern, is, you know, people ride their bikes or what have you. And it actually just happened on Friday. Our neighbor, John Kennedy, was out riding with his young children, and he came up along the bushes, and I was pulling out, and, you know, we almost collided, and I actually stopped and told him about this project to sort of alleviate this exact issue. You know, I think taking a step back, we've been landscaping our property for the last 18 months, the entire property, and this is sort of the last tip pole in the tent, if you will, that we've been waiting to address, and we want to sort of holistically figure out not only the driveway, but also the landscaping, because it's going to require us to remove some of the trees that are there. Now, the trees that are there are these old evergreen trees that are, you know, not been well-maintained by previous ownership, and so they're sort of in a precarious position. They're surrounded by power lines. They're close to my son's bedroom window, so if they ever fell, they're going to create a real problem. We have a lot of flooding on our street and our house and our neighbor's house, so we're very cognizant of that. So, you know, our proposal is to remove the trees, re-landscape that entire corner of the property there, you see in the upper right-hand corner. We're very cognizant, that's why we invited Rhina to come with us tonight, but we're very cognizant of the landscaping and want to obviously keep the seam that we've done throughout the last 18 months or so of re-landscaping that property. But as you can see, that picture there, I mean, it's incredibly blind, it's incredibly difficult to pull in and out of the driveway. The street is very narrow, and so when we pull out, there's the way that you kind of have to back around the corner. Yeah. Thank you very much, yeah. So this right here, these trees, these are what would, all those, these trees are going to come out, and that's kind of pulling around that corner right there is really what's tricky. So the proposal would be to expand that apron, pull the cars in perpendicularly this way, and then we could back straight out, and then obviously have a cleaner line of sight up and down the street. Actually, driving over here tonight, there was a black car, a Lincoln Town Car, that was flying up Course View as I was pulling out, and it was, you just can't see them coming, it's... So we've got a number of, you know, neighbors of small kids. Our neighborhood's turned over in the last few years. We have a lot of small kids in the neighborhood, and a lot of the neighbors have written letters, I think, agreeing with the project, because they've got kids that ride their bikes up and down the street, and if you know, small kids, they don't always have the greatest attention span. But I'll stop there unless you have any questions, and if you have any questions on the landscaping, I guess we've got Rhina Lustig here as our landscape architect that's worked with us for a long time to address any of those concerns.
I have a question. It can see in the picture, you've got two big cars over in that corner there, right? If there was only one car, are you able to turn around and get out facing forward?
Same, it'd be the same issue.
It is? You can't just back up and pull out straight if you...
You could, if you had one car, you would, I mean, you'd still have to, like that white car would still have to make the U, kind of the U backing out to get out that way.
There's not room to back up towards your garage door and then pull out forward? No?
Absolutely not.
It's very, it's very, it's a large curve, it's very tight. It's not like you can say you're back out.
Right.
It's very tight there.
Yeah. That black car in that picture, that's actually why I back it in. I'm the only one in the family that's going to back it in, but we back it in for that exact reason, because it's big enough where if you pull around the white car, it's actually shallow enough there that you'll, you will clip the front of the car on the side of the house as you try to make it the right angle to pull around.
Do you use your garage for your cars at all, and then back into...
It's the old sort of garage. It's too shallow, the door's not high enough, it's not wide enough, it's not deep enough. I mean, I'm not sure if my car...
Is it a two-car garage or a one-car garage?
It's, well, it's technically, it's got two garage doors, but the leftmost garage door, the wall of the garage is literally contiguous with the door. So if you pulled a car in there, you could open the door about four inches. So it's doesn't, it's really a one-car garage. There's a load-bearing support in the middle of the two doors, so if we were going to ever try to make that a single-door garage, so you could pull the car in the middle, I mean, we'd be starting with serious work with steel beams and everything else to support that, so.
The garage by 16 feet deep.
Well, you're, what you're talking about are new-school cars, right? Okay.
Yeah, definitely. So when, because whoever built that last, because that wasn't the original driveway, right? That little extra...
The driveway's been there like that for at least 20 years.
20 years, it's been like that? Okay. So it hasn't been changed in the last 20? So when they built it, they were able to probably, they were using it as a backup place to pull out forward, you think? Is that why they added that?
Well, the owners that we bought it from seven years ago parked the cars just like we park it.
Yeah.
I don't know what they did before, who owned it before, you know, what have you, but I would assume they do the same thing.
So they backed out, like you always have to?
So you can get one car in the garage. I guess the black navigator doesn't fit. That's too big.
That white car won't fit in either. I had an old BMW 5 Series before our kids got big enough to marry two SUVs. The 5 Series would sort of just barely get in there, tip to tail. I mean, you put the garage door down, six inches clearance behind the bumper, and the car was pulled all the way up to the front of the garage.
Now, the situation that you're proposing will still require you to back out onto the...
Right. We're backing straight out.
Onto Course View, correct?
Straight out, yeah, we're backing just straight out.
Well, it'll be a different angle, but you'll still be backing out.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. So it improves your situation marginally, I guess, but it doesn't totally...
But where he's backing out now, he's backing out into the wrong lane. He's backing out into oncoming traffic.
Well, as I said, a different, he's going to a different angle. Right.
But if you go back to that photograph, the black car, you don't need to back out.
Well...
You can drive that out.
Because he backed in.
Because you backed in.
I back in, which I, it's a real pain. I've got to go up around the cul-de-sac and back, you know, from way in front of where that red car is.
Well, presumably, you could go, just go past your driveway and just back in, and you could do the same with your white car.
My wife can't do that, so she's got to pull it in front ways, so then it's a real big...
Glad she doesn't hear you.
Enjoyable conversation in the Goman house every time she does it. But that's, I park it that way, because I'm, I can back it in that way, but being my wife can't, and so that's, and it's, I mean, it's, I'd love to not have to pull up the street and back, drive backwards for 200 yards to pull into the driveway.
And the trees to the right of the white car you're going to remove?
Yeah, we're going to remove those anyway, I mean, regardless sort of what happens. We're going to re-landscape that whole corner of the property, so we're going to redo that all, so that's all going to come out and get redone, which, again, Rhina can talk about if you're interested.
Wouldn't that improve the visibility a lot, once you take those trees down, for, say, kids are walking down? If you move those trees?
Yeah, it would. I think this is going to be a better proposal, because it's going to, again, you know, you're talking about just that little peninsula there, but it's going to make the ease of pulling in and out. But, again, you're sort of going to have to come from around that direction like that, and I think it's going to be easier if you're just backing straight out onto the street.
Before you touch the street, you have to make sure they're not in the building right of way. Because if you grab the survey, it looks like that one all the way out there might be on the building right of way, and it's not allowed to touch it until the village tree. See how you're, see how the right of way is right here? See that arrow says right of way? To just make sure before you touch it that you actually know, because there's a, it's a village tree, you're not allowed to touch it. And you will have to get a street opening permit to enlarge your footprint within that right of way, so you'll also have to get a permit.
Yeah, I thought we already did that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Christina, is there anything under the new code regarding trees, or Paul, on this?
Not in this context.
Not in this context.
Okay.
No, they are, we need to use them here.
Yeah, right.
But to expand the apron onto the street, that requires something additional if we approve the plan?
So they have to, as soon as they touch it, it can right of way, they have to get a DBW permit.
Okay, DBW.
Is any of what they're proposing in the village right of way?
I mean, I don't...
Can you tell? I mean...
Probably make that...
Is it right of way?
Yeah.
So I'm not, I have a surveyor, I mean, the best thing to do is have a surveyor go out there and just stake out, take your survey and stake out, so you can see exactly where it is.
Yeah.
It's possible that, you know, our general foreman might come out there, but it's like questionable, he won't tell you, but he might say this one might be, you can touch it. Just so everybody is aware that it is questionable. I'm not really sure, because a lot of people think that their property line was to...
Right. Mm-hmm. It doesn't...
My property line actually goes into the street.
What?
My property line goes into the street.
Into the street?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it might be, so might I have to be a question before you actually take it down, or do you just let it fly out?
Yeah.
The bigger issue is, you turn around, it's near the right of it, it's really, it's really unsafe condition, with cars coming in front of Ridgcroft down this way, and it's a line corner, over going that way, coming this way, and back another way. It's really, there's a couple of line spots in play here, and the proposal really remedies that. And I think we're looking at that, the letters of support, and the neighbors here that have children. It's very pedestrian, people are always walking dogs up and down here.
But doesn't, if the applicant can remove those trees, which he's planning to do, and I'm just looking at that former picture, doesn't that solve the problem?
Yeah.
When you're, when you're driving out, you're, I mean, I've visited the property, you're going to have, you know, proper visibility on that road.
I think it helps, I think it helps the problem, that a little bit, but it doesn't fix the fact that he essentially has to drive illegally down the road in order to turn around, because he's backing out into oncoming traffic. He's backing out in front of a lane that's coming at him. So the only, so he's really going to...
But you're saying that white car you cannot drive in, go a bit to the left, and back that in, but you can do it with a black car?
I'm sorry?
No, the way the black car is to get backed in is, is I have to, I don't know if you can see the street view, but you have to go the roundabout, and I can pull all the way around the roundabout, so that I'm facing the way that, you know, red car is, back up down the street, that's maybe 100 yards, 150 yards, and then pull back, back up into my driveway. The street's too narrow to try to drive down towards Ridgcroft and then back in that way. You can't, you can't make that turn. There's bushes there that you can't see from the neighbor on the right. And then, look, I think it's, you know, that peninsula, again, it creates sort of just an obstacle to pull in and out of, and what we're trying to do is, you know, again, pull the cars in perpendicularly, you know, so it's easier to get in and out. And we've got a au pair that lives with us, and she can't, she can make the turn, but I mean, she just can't do anything sophisticated with the car as far as backing in and out, so, you know, that's the, that's the gist of the request.
Any other alternatives that you've looked at to address this? I mean, well, cutting down the trees clearly helps.
Yeah.
I mean, for example, your garage?
In what sense?
Well, it sounds like the, you may have a width issue with one of the bays. You can only, can you get one car?
Not all, I mean, you can't get an SUV in.
You can't get either of the SUVs in?
Yeah, yeah. And then it's, that, the ceiling is so low that, I mean, you'd have to either dig down into the bedrock, which is not a bedrock, or you'd have to, you know, there's a room there right above the garage, so you'd have to take that room out. So it's, it's a pretty invasive project to...
Or could you put in doors that open up like that? I've seen garage doors like that, because it sounds like, it looks like those are doors that open up and they're hanging down a bit.
Yeah, that column's a load-bearing column, so we'd have to, to, you know...
Put a header in or something.
Put a steel beam in.
Yeah.
Having put a steel beam in another part of my house, that's not a fun project.
Right. We've all done that.
It is only 16 feet deep. You haven't had a...
Right.
My living room wall is on the other side, so I couldn't expand it. I can't make it deeper.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak up? Oh, please come up and please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tom Bellone, and I've lived at 28 Ridgcroft for 30 years.
Okay.
And our property is contiguous to the Gomans', and that's why I'm here. I don't want to oppose anyone's expansion or enjoyment of their house or their property. But this particular proposal adversely affects my enjoyment of my property, because our backyard and patio face directly to the existing driveway configuration. As it stands now, we're somewhat insulated by those large trees, the existing shrubbery, and the fact that there were only two cars there. But this proposal is essentially eliminating green space and substituting it with asphalt, which is going to allow for two additional cars. which is going to allow for two additional cars. The present configuration allows for four cars, two on the apron and two facing the garage. I'm not going to get into the efficacy of the garage. I believe something could be done where at least one or two cars could be there. And what's troubling me here, and, you know, perhaps it may trouble you, I feel that there is no safety issue. I've lived in the neighborhood for 30 years, and it has been and remains one of the most quiet blocks in the entire village. And I heard two inconsistent proposals here. One gentleman said that the danger was from the cars. The other gentleman said, well, the cars aren't really a problem, it's the foot traffic, there's increased foot traffic. Well, when we brought our kids up, we counted once, there were 38 children in the neighborhood, bikes, dogs, the whole thing. There has never been, to my knowledge, one accident, one mishap, nothing in connection with this property. And I would suggest that if safety is an issue, and I do not concede that, there are other ways to address this. A convex mirror can be installed for under $100, and it gives the family the opportunity to see not only foot traffic, but vehicle traffic. I wasn't going to suggest the dramatic or draconian, I would consider it, step of chopping down these trees, which are 40 and 50 feet high. A branch has never fallen from them. The evergreens are thick, they provide shade for my property, they provide privacy. And even more than that, this is not just about me. If you drive into Ridgecroft, there are two majestic stone columns that are probably over 100 years old, and it's the gateway to the neighborhood. To the left of one of those columns is the green space, is the, are the trees. That's going to be eliminated if this proposal is accepted. And in the place of the trees in the green space, you're going to have an additional asphalt apron, which is going to accommodate additional cars. And I submit to you that the safety issue is a pretext. It's just a pretext to allow for an expansion. And although it may be more convenient to our neighbors, it impacts upon us singularly. No one else in the neighborhood is affected because their backyard is not on the property line here. And the whole thing is really just unnecessary. It's just, yet again, you know, another expansion. You commented in the earlier application that you were pleased to see the removal of a circular driveway. Well, here we're going back in the other direction, we're expanding the driveway to allow for more cars. And aesthetically, it creates an aura of a parking lot as opposed to the bucolic feel that the neighborhood has. Now, I'm not sure about, on the issue of the trees, but I, I read an article, I think it was for Mayor Marvin, that the stated agenda of the village now is to protect trees, to plant more trees. So we're taking down these big trees that haven't hurt a soul to create an additional driveway. So, you know, my argument is both altruistic for the neighborhood, but it also affects us personally and negatively. So with all due respect...
Do you address the fact that the applicant says that he has the right to, he's going to take down the trees regardless?
Well, I can't do anything about that, that's up to you.
Right, so then why is that an impediment to you?
I'm not happy about it, but that...
I know you're not happy about it, but really it has nothing to do with this application.
No, no, but it's part and parcel of the application. I was not aware until this evening that those trees were coming down whether or not the expansion takes place. If they come down, at least there'll be other landscaping there and green space. But if they come down and there's an additional apron, now I'm looking at cars and asphalt. So it, it's sort of a double insult.
Was there any way the applicant can add or replace those trees?
Well, we can do that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see how that's possible. And when they say it's 10 feet, it's just 10 feet to the curb, you have to look at the square footage. And this whole problem came about, which is not the Gomans' fault. This property has been changed two or three times. When we moved in, we had to endure a two-year renovation where the house was expanded by 35%, the footprint. And we went from an inobtrusive driveway that went to the back of the house and it was privacy for the neighborhood to what we have now. And that alteration created the problem. And then the owners after that added the apron where the two cars are now. And, and the bottom line, let's be reasonable here. How many cars does a family have to be able to put in front of their house? They can accommodate four now. And the street, as I said, is so quiet. We and others have had parties on the street. We have 50 cars parked, you know, on, on the public street. So I, I understand why my neighbors want to do it. It's an expansion, it's an added convenience, but I, I believe this should be about weighing the equities. And I thank you for listening to me.
Let me ask you one question.
Thank you.
Have you spoken with the Gomans?
I've gotten that, Mr. Goman.
Yeah, I talked to his wife. I actually interviewed Mr. Ryan, who was interested in this, and invited him to do a process, part of the landscape process. It would be comfortable, and she said she had no interest in doing it.
Well, that was only last week.
I'm not, I'm not trying to create any controversy, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because sometimes that, listen, I'm a lawyer.
I don't want to get into a tete-a-tete.
No, no, I understand.
I understand why the application is being made. I, I do understand it, and I hope you understand my opposition.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We absolutely do.
All right, so I'll clear you the couple of things up, and then I'd like Rhina to go ahead and present the landscape architect because I think the implication here is that we have an owner who's not interested in beautifying the area, but instead is sacrificing the beauty and the bucolic nature of the neighborhood, as Mr. Bellone put it, in, in trade for a little bit of convenience and no safety whatsoever. So first of all, regarding the cars, they're, they will not have the ability to park any more cars than they have now. They're just changing the direction of the cars, that's all that they're doing. And by changing the direction of the cars, I, I, it becomes clearly a better scenario for those neighbors. And so the Bellones live north, right, just north of exactly where that driveway is. So currently, the headlights and the taillights point directly at their house. So by turning the cars 90 degrees, it actually alleviates that, and they don't have headlights in their living room where they're... It does not allow for any more cars to be parking on that driveway than what they have now. Again, just change the direction. And then I'll give the mic to Rhina, the landscape architect, because they have a beautiful plan for what they want to do with that entire corner that not only maintains the density, but actually improves the beauty, because some of the trees there are really just old scrappy evergreens, and they're really investing a lot of money, a lot of energy to really beautify this as opposed to what the implication is. Yeah, before we do that, I have a question for you. What is the distance from the garage out to the road? It's about 16 feet also. Okay, so you could park a car in front of the garage facing out?
The issue is, if you park one there, the issue is, this is part of the reason why you can't, you can't pull the bar out of the finger, what you would call it.
Right.
You can't pull a car out of the block.
No, no, I, no, I understand that, but you could, I mean, the neighbor did say you, in theory, could get four cars there. I know that's not practical, but you could have one car in front of the garage and the other one in the apron. I mean, you do have, I mean, it's deep enough, that was my question. It, it's deep enough, in other words, the car would not be... Eight car for like a, like a, like a small car, like a small sedan could fit in front of the garage? Yeah.
16 feet.
But 16 feet, so either the white car or the black car could... Well, no, I think those are longer than, those are longer than 16.
They can, it's wide, but you can't, one would sit there and couldn't get that a lot of...
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll let Rhina Lustig take the mic.
Hi, Rhina, whoops, Lustig. I don't know if you have the landscape plan that I drew, Paul, do you have?
Uh, we do. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. The way that I've showed the replanting of that corner, if you can kind of imagine some smaller shrubs towards the street and the larger screening back a little bit will allow the Gomans to have a better view of the cars that are coming in both directions. The, the borrowed landscape is a very big topic in situations like this when a neighbor's view is borrowed from another person's property and that other person decides to make a change. And it's very upsetting when there's change, especially if you've lived in a property for a long time and you're accustomed to, to a certain view from your back patio or from your kitchen window. I've seen all kinds of situations when the borrowed landscape changes. And that's part of the problem with the evergreen trees that are right there at the corner right now that are actually the nicest ones that will have to be removed is that they are part of the borrowed landscape. We're proposing the new plants to eventually give a, an evergreen, you know, various colored shades and textures of evergreen in that corner to compensate for some of the things we're taking out. And they will certainly give a better, especially those three big ones right on the property line, a much better screen right against the line for, than what's currently there, which is the scrappy part. The, you know, there, there's also a depression slightly, for some reason, maybe an old tree trunk rotted or something where it sort of is all sunk down. So we're hoping to kind of just even out the grade a little bit there, so whatever we plant will be just slightly higher to start with. And the Gomans have spared, you know, have been very interested in putting in large material and full, full, healthy plants throughout the property for the last couple of years that I've been working there. And I don't expect that this would be any different. I don't know if you have any questions about the plants that I'm proposing or the arrangement? There's existing...
How many trees are being taken down? Four, four trees, okay.
The four mature trees that are, that are there?
The right, right on the corner?
The issue is that the previous owner cut all branches from, they tend to be up down, so from the street hole, there's no branches there, you have the bush that you're...
Yeah, I, I went by there twice.
Mm-hmm, I saw it.
Right, okay.
Do I have a question? Did you take that, if you go back to what we were calling a survey, but it's not a legal survey from what I understand, did you take that from a survey, Tom? Where'd you get that? Because that's not, it doesn't actually have a survey or stamp, it doesn't say survey.
No, there's, there's a survey.
Did you take it from a survey?
The stamp, I think, is up in the corner there on the... Oh, oh, okay.
The normal able to be surveyed, I've never seen a survey where it actually shows the corner of your property here to another property. So I'm comparing that to the whole tree on the village property only because I don't... This, according to this, this said village right of way is God and God. And that's not in mind, it shows that there's trees that are going down the village right of way. So until you get approval from the village to allow you to take down that tree, I don't really think that it should be there. And that's my only concern, like, the whole issue.
That, that's a, that's a condition precedent for your project. If you can't take those trees down, you can't do your project, correct?
I don't know, I don't know, well, I don't know if the trees still there, but you're right with it. I know it's not the scale, but, you know, it might be that if you approve it and outperform that tree, it could be a village tree. But it's not village tree, it's only a village tree, which, like I said, you can't say that.
I don't think we can vote on it, but...
I think we should.
What if we vote on it, you can't take the tree?
Well, it, it will be, you know, that's a whole different matter, I think, you know, trust me.
I was going to say, if you go back to the, the proposal, maybe it's irrelevant based on...
And there's the possibility of performance, so you can't remove the tree.
What we can do, you know, honestly, you can see the way that, with both of these cars, you know, it was a compromise to persuade the Bellones concerned. You can see, normally, being consistent here, maybe we could get back this sort of two or three feet here, go back and see exactly what, like, two or three feet to get further back further from the property line. And that would, that would increase the net square footage of the asphalt, five, 16 feet or so.
Mr. Chairman, we have a laser pointer at the microphone.
No. Sorry?
We have a laser pointer at the microphone.
Okay.
We do?
I see a mouse, I see a speaker.
No, no, it...
Oh, at that mic.
You're at that mic.
Oh, you can use your...
Oh, okay. I thought you meant up here, sorry.
You know, I can't point accurately, it's my hands too shaky. But you could give some of that back right there, like, you know, so it brings it further back from their property line and decreases the net, you know, square footage of, of concrete that we're asking for, or asphalt, I guess the case may be.
How much square footage are you adding of asphalt?
I think it's 200, 200, right?
200.
Square feet?
That force comes along, there would be like, net, like, 60.
Christina, Paul, a question for you. If permission is required to remove those trees, okay?
If you want to, I mean, is one of the questions?
Oh, what is the process?
They would have to go to the village commissioner and see, I mean...
They go to...
I don't want to hold the district attorney, we don't want to do that.
Sorry?
I don't want to hold the district attorney, we don't want to do that. You know, but it'd be dumb, you know, if there's something that's supposed to go to the commissioner now.
So that goes to Mr. Palmer?
Yeah.
Jim?
And, and we've, we've had these issues before. We had it up on Elm Rock where residents don't realize that these trees are village trees, and it hasn't been enforced up until now, but now it's starting to be more enforced, so...
Well, you know, there are people that hold the office, say, have a tree, and when they rock it, they're saying, don't take it down. And then they're, they're having to do like, why don't you just help them down? It's upset that you took it down.
So isn't this the dilemma? If, in fact, the applicant needs permission to remove the trees, right? If you're going to need that, I mean, in order to, you know, pursue this project, you need to take those trees down, right? So are we getting the cart before the horse here?
I think that you would have to base your approval on having, having a survey staked out by a surveyor and make sure that it is not a village tree. If it is a village tree, you have to have approval for moving it, or else it's your own...
Okay, 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 that's fine. Okay, okay, that's clear, okay, good. Okay, any more questions or comments from the public?
So I have a question. Are you now making an amendment to your application to move it in three feet? Or that was just a proposal, is that a, an amendment to the application?
Well, I thought it helped to persuade their concern, your approval process, it's something that we need to do, but it's not going to sway over or whatever.
Then it's just a proposal, not an amendment.
If you were not able to take the tree down, would you still want to expand your driveway?
I can't.
Can't.
Oh, you can't. Okay.
I'll have to, I mean, it's interesting, I'll have to talk to Jim, but it's, if the trees are in the way...
Yeah, doesn't it make any...
...the issue of town, because towns have to, you know... The issue of town, because the town has to, um, welcome you, you know, show them the, the visibility or something, it's just not something like that.
You guys have any more questions, should we vote on it?
I'm ready to vote.
Let's vote on it. Yep.
Let's ask them if they want to be, if they want to find out about the trees.
Okay, well, a question for the applicant. Do you want to find out about the trees, uh, before we take a decision? You can, as an applicant, you can, you know, defer the decision, uh, or our decision. Do that first and then come back? Or do you?
I'm not sure what the process is, I thought they were going to reduce first, an accurate decision would have been-
We can do it, absolutely, I'm just, I'm just throwing- You can, I'm just throwing that out there.
But what we're saying is, we were not aware until tonight that there might be an issue with, how do you put it? Impossibility of performance. You may not be able to do your project if, in fact, you find that the, that the trees can't be removed. So you might need to come back with a modified project, or, 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 or something like that. So, I mean, listen, we can vote on your project now, but then if you find you can't do it, then you're going to be, uh, going through extra, I mean, that's fine, we're happy to vote. Yeah.
Make it subject to.
Yeah, so, sure, we can do that.
You have to come back to, I mean, you could take it-
Most of them have different ideas.
Yeah.
Okay. I think the neighbor had something he- Excuse me, any other comments?
No.
Okay. We're good? Okay, well, let me, uh, yeah, we're gonna vote, okay. So, let me propose a resolution that the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Bronxville grant the residents of Nineteen Course View a variance from section three-ten dash twenty-two D. Parking is not allowed in the front yard. Variance requested for an expanded driveway, which is deemed to be in the front yard. Okay, let me start with you, Charlie, your thoughts.
Okay, um, let, let me just preface my remarks by saying that, in the Village of Bronxville, parking is almost invariably tight. We have had this situation many, many times in the eight years that I've been on the board. The purpose, or the, the, the job of the zoning board is to weigh the benefit to the applicant against possible detriments to the neighborhood or the community, okay? And we have five factors we need to consider. I won't go so far as to say that this is just a pretext. I do believe there is some benefit to the applicant in, in, uh, in, in expanding the driveway. I, 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 and I, and I will even accept there may be some safety issue. I believe the safety issue can be, um, can, can, can be gotten around in other ways, okay? Now, who knows, maybe we can't remove these trees, but a removal of the trees would certainly, from what I can see, uh, resolve, at least partially, the, the safety issue. As for the detriment to the neighborhood, I'm concerned about a few things. Number one, uh, the removal of large trees. I think that that changes the character of the neighborhood, no matter how you plan on landscaping it. You have to wait fifty years, sixty years, eighty years for a tree to grow, uh, to, you know, maturity. Uh, I'm concerned about more asphalt, uh, you know, and, and the paving over of our community. I'm, I'm concerned about that in terms of the, um, uh, the, 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 you know, hards, hardscapes as opposed to lawns. And I'm a, a, a little bit concerned, frankly, about the uncertainty of the, um, possible encroachment on the village with the project and also the trees. So, given all of that, I am going to vote against the variance, vote no on variance.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. Uh, Janie, your thoughts?
Um, I have to agree with Charlie. I'm also gonna vote to oppose it for most of the reasons he said. Also, just to remind you that this is very visible. When you bought this house, I know it, your driveway was right there. And if you can put two cars there already, there's a lot of asphalt. When you add two hundred more feet, we're not thinking to put five cars there. I don't know what you're gonna do, but it's very visible because you really have two front yards there. It's not behind your house. So, I think to the whole neighborhood, I understand the safety is an issue, but I live in the area too, and have for many years, and it's relatively quiet compared to a lot of other streets in Bronxville, and we all have the same issue of backing out one way or tricky and watch for kids. And, I mean, I think that's common around here. So I don't see that the benefit to you outweighs all that. I think, you know, this is the way it's been, and I think this is sort of the nature of our, our pretty town. And so, trees notwithstanding, I think you could probably do a beautiful landscaping job, but I don't think the safety issue is really so severe that it warrants adding two hundred square feet of asphalt right visible from the street to everybody, so I also oppose it.
Thank you, John?
Although it doesn't make a difference because there are two negatives already. Uh, I'm in favor of the variance. I think the benefit is, is the real one, the safety, and I don't think the detriment outweighs that, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay, uh, well, I agree with my other colleagues. I'm not in favor of the variance, really for the reasons cited. But I also imagine, I, I think this is substantial in terms of the amount of blacktop that is being added, uh, in this proposal. And in looking at this, um, the applicant's parking compared to almost every, most other residents in Bronxville is exceptional. So, again, I don't, um, see the, the benefit or the need for this. So, therefore, the variance is not granted. Okay. All right, so thank you for attending tonight, um, and that concludes our meeting.